Wednesday, thirty, twenty twenty-four meeting into order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions in our Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty, that is, the open meeting law. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Take attendance, Commissioner Stady.
In present, sir.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Stade is present, that's number two. Number three, there are no executive session today. Number four, minutes of the open meeting law, open session meeting held on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four for approval.
Not ready this week, we'll see.
The minutes are not ready, will be ready next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Will we table approval for next week?
Table for next week, call my favor.
Aye.
Number five, appointments, we have none. Number six, public comment. Each meeting, we have a section on our agenda for public comment. If there's anyone out in Zuland that has any public comment, now is the time to address it.
Sure, for you.
Director Cronin, do you have a public comment?
I would like to make it an out, um, that's okay with you.
Certainly.
Um, on Sunday morning, the county offices at six fourteen High Street were exposed to a cyber attack. Uh, the county IT information technology team responded quickly and has been working diligently for the last three days to respond to this matter. The IT department, working with outside experts, as well as state and federal law enforcement agencies, are cataloging the damage that may have been caused while leading the recovery efforts. While we cannot say for certain what pieces of personal information or any information that uh, may have been compromised, we'll have more information in the coming days to share. That information will be shared promptly after we receive approval to release that information. So we thank everybody for their patience as we undergo this situation. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Last call?
Mr. Chairman, I would note that, um, we want to commend our director, our assistant director, and the IT members who put in some extra overtime dealing with this thing. Uh, I know they spent some while on a Sunday especially, I think they were up to be working hard, so, um, uh, just, you know, ours, I appreciate the effort. So we'll get to the bottom of it.
Absolutely, I, I, unfortunately, I think we're in the beginning of it, not the end, so we'll play it by ear.
Yeah.
Number seven, all business. I have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration, I believe there are three on this second page, you see the third.
Right.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
All right, Mr. Chairman, uh, through you, I want to move approval of following. At first, the registry of deeds. Notice appointment of Carol Graham of Waymouth, Mass. as senior clerk at the rate stated effective date eleven, four, twenty-four. Uh, this is replacing Jordan Freeman, that's my motion, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Uh, next, Commissioner's office, I move uh, notice of appointment of Maureen McKinnon of Clinton, Mass. As the chief procurement officer?
McKeon.
I'm sorry.
McKean, I believe is the name, McKeon?
I believe she goes by McKeon.
McKeon, okay. McKeon, I'll make, make a note of that. As the chief procurement officer, the rate stated effective date eleven, eighteen, twenty-four, is replacing, uh, uh, Nancy Rockwell, so.
Second. Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. One more at the ID.
Next, at the Norfolk County Agricultural School High School, I move approval of notice contingent deployment for Rachel Wing of Millville, Mass. As a student worker at the rate stated effective date ten, thirty-one, twenty-four, so moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And then I just have to read for the record, I believe. Notice on LOA, effective ten, twenty-one, twenty-four. I believe.
Yes.
On the code ten dash oh one, I believe?
Yes, right, code ten dash oh one.
And the notice would leave.
The votes have enough of that.
Voting, please.
Okay. You make the motion, Richard?
I did.
Your second, second? Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's it. For that.
Thank you, that concludes personnel for today, next is payroll and expense warrants.
All right. Mr. Chairman, we have only three things. Uh, I move the following for approval for the warrant list of ten, thirty, twenty-four. First, dated twenty-five dash seventeen, payroll of the county, move approval of one hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars, ninety-two cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye. Second, I want to move approval of the payroll of the school. Uh, this is warrant list twenty-five dash one-seven, parentheses nine, the sum of three hundred eighty thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars, twenty-two cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And third, last one, uh, expense of the county of ten dash oh five, twenty-five. I move approval of sixty-nine, oh, sorry, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars, twenty-three cents, so moved.
Second. Excellent. That, that is it?
Motion made in second.
I'm sorry, motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye. That concludes the warrants, Mr. Chairman.
That's my question, thank you. Number ten, we applaud American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, although you have no, our rewards before you, uh, for consideration this week, I just wanted to briefly update the commissioners that this past week, we had our monthly, uh, quad county meeting with the other counties, um, of note, uh, Branstable and, excuse me, Bristol and Plymouth, um, had provided, uh, broad extensions to the grant deadline to the end of October, I mean, I believe, that resulted in numerous applications being flooded into their portal by the end of October by the communities looking to close out their, their grants. As you know, Norfolk County approached it differently, we had individualized, customized plans, if you will, per community. Um, and based on each closeout plan, those dates are sort of applicable to the individual community's, uh, efforts to close out. Uh, we still have, I believe, six communities that have funding remaining, and we have an idea of where they're heading before the end of December of twenty twenty-four, so different approach to the same endgame. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to alert you that our, our peers and the other communities are dealing with, I believe, over thirty applications per coun- per county to close out their respective grants. Um, we are all in very similar positions, um, uh, relative to the amount of money, um, on hand at this date with two months to go. Um, there was one county, I believe it was Bristol, um, that indicated that they do expect to claw back on spent or unallocated monies um, and use it for county purposes. I told them that we were hoping to award all our funds to each of our communities as designed and planned, and that any such, uh, use or reuse by the communities, by the, uh, county would result in redistribution to other eligible county communities. So we're a little different in that space. Other than that, um, we're all on the same footing, we all understand the monitoring phase, which is coming up, starting um, well, not that monitoring started, is starting in January of twenty-five, we've been doing quarterly monitoring since the beginning of the grant. But this monitoring will take on a different dimension after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, when we're going to be actively looking at how they're actually spending their money against the, uh, the award. Um, following the meeting on Tuesday, I had a phone call with the treasurer from Plymouth County and Clifton Larson around some nuanced rules within the treasury's guidance on how to handle funds that are awarded to these communities after December thirty-first. There seems to be some, uh, flexibility within the rules that would enable communities that have approved obligated funds to transfer those to um, other eligible obligated grants. Um, it's an area that still needs some, uh, fortified, um, structure around it so that we can help our communities optimize the money. But as we discussed it, um, what it does is it presents us another tool to ensure that the monies that have been allocated to us by the federal government are spent. So briefly, commissioners, as you understand, we had this sum of money, a hundred thirty-seven million dollars that came in, and we allocated it based on population to the twenty-eight cities and towns. Our hope is that those cities and towns would then put in applications that would consume that money, and then for each application, spend the money up to the limits that had been provided to them. You've approved over two hundred grants applications. There's a pretty good reasonable understanding that several of those estimates of cost um, may have been more than what they actually spent. So when we see that some communities or some grants have some flexibility, uh, for example, if a community was given a million dollars to do a project and they spent nine hundred thousand, there's a hundred thousand dollar delta. So what we're going to try to do is put together a plan that would use that, that, that surplus on that grant, which is officially closed and done, but it has a surplus, transfer to another eligible category. Um, this is an area that's very vague and, um, gray right now, and we're going to hopefully define it more clearly by January so the communities can optimize that money against their, uh, allocation. Um, so it's a, it's a positive development, it's a positive interpretation of the final rule, I want to compliment Clifton Larson for, uh, bringing this forward to us, um, our friends at Markham, um, agree with this interpretation, so it gives us a space to operate in the final two years to make sure no money goes back, goes back to Delta. More on that later.
Questions, Commissioner Stady?
Mr. Chairman, through you, uh, try to let this, so if I've got this clear, in the case of a community that has some extra or excess money, you're saying that money would then be reallocated within that town into a project they would need? Or does it go into a pool and then we could maybe use it in other areas?
Either one.
Okay.
As long as the destination of those funds is to a, an approved obligated project.
So what, what, what does that mean?
So, right now, we're all moving towards, um, fully obligating the grant projects before the end of December. Right, we have to have a plan lined up, approved by the commissioners and obligated as a grant application. So, as you know, we've asked all our communities to submit excess capacity grant applications.
Action.
So, um, there's a, there's a, there's a landing spot for some of those funds into those approved allocated projects. And furthermore, um, if you want to give me an example that may include a community with multiple grant awards, um, and they had a surplus in one and they want to move it to another one that's already been approved, we may do that.
Okay, I got you.
So, and there's some structures around it, but we, to be clear, Commissioner Stady, the December thirty-first deadline is hard and fast, you cannot create new obligations or new applications or new projects after that.
I'm assuming that you have probably in your conversations with the managers and so on, you've told them to put applications in.
We have, I've made that clear, we, we put that forward in our January guidance. Every community's closeout plan, notify them, if you have an interest in excess capacity, put them in. I believe I've reported to the commissioners that we have somewhere around eighteen excess capacity grant applications currently in the portal.
Okay.
Uh, Norfolk County will also be adding excess capacity grant applications so that we can also use the same number.
That's good to hear, okay. That answers that part, good, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, still having another one.
Anybody else have any, any other questions? Okay, ten and eleven are all Saturday, are all related. Twelve, report from the procurement department, bid openings in contract awards, we have none today, correct?
Correct.
And number thirteen is the procurement unit update. Basically the same, we have none for that?
No, I do. Under number thirteen, I do have an update on the unit.
All right.
We have no update on contracts or bids.
Okay. Procurement unit update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this afternoon, the commissioner's appointed Maureen McKeon as the new CPO, we're delighted to, uh, bring forth her, uh, credentials for your approval today. Maureen comes to us with several years of experience in this space, most recently as the CPO for the town of Hockington, Massachusetts. Over the last several months, as I've reported, um, internally, we've interviewed a number of candidates, uh, with varying degrees of experience in qualifications. Uh, Maureen surfaces as the top candidate, um, of choice, she, as I mentioned, brings some, um, experience not just in Hockington, but additional municipal space, including, um, the town of Framingham, Stowe, Massachusetts, Worcester, and of course, Hockington. Maureen will begin on, uh, November eighteenth. Um, we will be sending out more updates on the procurement unit transition. As many of you know, since Nancy left, we've been using capital strategies in their services to bridge, um, our procurement activities. Um, Amy Putney has been our CPO, uh, since Nancy left. Amy will be leaving us this Friday, um, she's moving into a personal space, getting out of the business. Um, her role will be replaced by Jennifer Thompson, who's one of the principals of capital strategies. So Jen will start taking overall CPO duties until September, excuse me, November eighteenth, when Maureen arrives. Trish Bernard will remain with us, um, through, um, November twenty-first, um, that will allow for a one-week transition period between the work that Trish has done, assessing the workflow analysis and the purchasing policies and procedures, um, which she has drafted a, a report for. Uh, during her onboarding, um, last week, I indicated to Maureen that when she starts, the, the work plan will be given to her as a draft proposal of how things ought to work within this unit. Similarly, it'll include recommendations for changes to our existing purchasing policy that Maureen can assess and either add to or accept as a future consideration of a policy adoption by the commissioner, so uh, we're underway, our plan is kind of coming into focus, we're delighted to have Maureen come on board. There's just some people coming and going, I know it's a little confusing for the department heads. Uh, please bear with us over the next several weeks as we land this full-time employee. But I'll try to send out an email before Friday, letting people know about Jen's contact, Amy's sunset, and, uh, we look forward to seeing Maureen in the rubber, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and the new hire, Maureen?
Yes, sir.
Is stay trained and has been to the course?
Oh, yes, she's MCPP certified.
What is that?
Massachusetts Chief Procurement, uh, Per-, uh, Public Purchasing Officer certified.
Okay. That's important, I mean, either way, we we keep, we keep the rest of the courses in, in but they must do updates, I know Nancy used to go with those.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, Jen Thompson, who is replacing Amy, is also certified, yeah, we keep it straight going.
Okay. That's all for procurement today, we look forward to meeting our new purchasing director. Number fourteen, report of the county director.
Just a few items, Mr. Chairman, um, this week, the, um, Human Resources Division will be, uh, interviewing candidates for our plumbing vacancy. We interviewed a candidate yesterday who did pretty well, um, I believe we have another one scheduled for Thursday, I believe. Um, following the interviews, we'll make a judgment on who is best uh, suited through qualification and experience for that role, make recommendation to hire it back, fill Mr. Regan's vacancy. Um, I received the notice from the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office last week that they approve of the cover letter for the opioid um, opening grant, um, opportunity award letter, if you will. You may recall a year ago when we started the program at the DA's office, that the commissioners co-sign offer letters to each of the community coalition members, um, along with the DA introducing the opportunity for them to apply for funding, um, against our opioid balance. Last year, the county commissioners and the DA awarded, uh, fifteen grants uh, to fifteen organizations of a thousand dollars each. Um, doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it was to the smaller organizations that really could use the cash influence influx. We intend to increase that award to fifteen hundred dollars this year. Um, and, um, as I mentioned, the letter has been approved for distribution. Um, I will get the notice out to the coalition so that they can apply for these funds without delay, and we'll release the money based on your votes in an upcoming meeting. So we're keeping the opioid money going into the local coalitions in an effective way. And I just want to footnote, Commissioner Stady, you and I have talked about um, use of those, uh, funds in other areas beyond the coalition. Uh, stand ready to assist you in some of the community, um, partners that you've been talking about towards, um, towards hopefully getting access to some of those funds. Happy to do so down the road.
With the words right into my mouth.
Did I really?
Yeah, you read my mouth.
Fair enough.
But we keep getting in that particular one, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
It has to do with the sobriety of, um, Kili's house.
Mm-hmm.
And the problem is that she keeps sending us invites to attend and we keep, can't, can't agree on a date, and I think it's, you get into a tricky situation trying to have all three of us go to one place, try to call a meeting or.
Right.
So I wish we could just have a person come in and speak to us and just make a presentation, and then we can try to assist her, but I'll, I'll circle back on that, see what I can do. We'll do the best we can.
Uh, and finally, commissioners, um, earlier this week, uh, we observed some, um, email traffic between, um, several Norfolk County communities and the Norfolk County Retirement Board. I spoke to our, your representative, Paul Connors, yesterday about these developments.
I think we all did.
Accordingly, yes, um, the retirement board, as I understand it, was, uh, proposing some changes to the, uh, contribution of retirement costs, uh, by each community, the actuary for the um, Norfolk County Retirement Board had proposed, I believe, three different options to help, uh, follow the line with some parter guidelines, state guidelines for closing liabilities and mitigating risks. Um, each of these proposals resulted in, um, alarming changes to what these communities expected to be paying for next fiscal year. Um, I spoke to Paul, um, he was kind enough to drop off the documentation to me yesterday, but due to posting guidelines, um, he could not be here today. I encouraged him to reach out to each of you to discuss, uh, the status of the retirement board's actions. Um, I understand the retirement board had a meeting this morning, I'm not aware that it's a vote, they may have, they may not have all these changes. Um, we will find out what the impact is on Norfolk County once the board, uh, vote is made public. Um, I will tell you, each of the models, um, had varying degrees of impact on Norfolk County government, that is us. Um, two of them had extraordinarily high, um, cost increases, which would frankly blow us out of the financial water. And I think that's kind of the noise that they were hearing from the communities. Um, so believing that the retirement board will, um, assess that impact, uh, it's likely that the the lower amount or the less impactful figure, um, may be the outcome. Oh, it remains to be seen, but it would result in pushing out the years um, currently expected to be twenty thirty for viability or full funding of viability. I think they were thinking moving it out to twenty thirty-five, if I'm not mistaken, uh, to flatten out the impact, among other things. So I will report back as soon as I learn more, but, um, suffice to say the communities were allowed, as they hopefully should be, uh, and the voices were heard by the retirement board to make a vote or take a vote, and they are able to, um, um, adjust these schedules according to their, uh, actuaries' recommendations, so just an alert, we'll let you know as soon as we hear, uh, what that impact might be.
Um, any other comment on that? I, I have one. Um.
Just a remark, this is not on your agenda for deliberation, but of course, I thought it'd be important to note.
But I think it will be in the in the future. However, um, I believe they had a meeting Monday morning with voices being heard. I know they did, they had a regularly scheduled meeting, today is their monthly meeting.
Okay.
They meet at the last Wednesday of every month and then other times. I am afraid what's the result of today's meeting, they may even still be meeting. However, we have been aware for a while, not a long time, about Parrex involvement in forcing every member every public pension in the Commonwealth, by the way, there's a hundred and five various pension boards that have come under the Parrex umbrella, mostly cities and towns. And they are all under the same rules, and they have been back and forth and back and forth to Parrex about the dates of, of getting this accomplished. I remember I made, going to meetings in the nineties, and they were talking about two thousand and forty for being the date for the unfunded liability. Well, it's two thousand and twenty-four, and they're trying to avoid the date of two thousand and forty, the state is, and it makes it difficult. There are some communities that were already fully funded. Right, Wellesley stands out in our county as some of that's fully funded. And maybe one other, which I'm not positive, but I looking at the list, it's pretty difficult. And it's nobody likes to face up to paying more. We're, we're, we're involved in the same entity for our employees. And of course, the pension is here to stay. And, uh, their new actuary had, had, I believe, convinced them that the, of which the best way to go, and I think we'll hear the, the result very soon. And I think it's time, I know Paul was here last December, and, I mean, we see Paul because he's a member of our advisory board also, and he keeps us informed, so I'd like to, uh, warm up a date to have him in here and, um, December's only a very short time away, but let's do it in November. We'll have, getting the results by then, because there I think other, I don't, I don't care what other pension board's done, but I've been told other pension boards have already taken this vote, and it's pretty much not well-received statewide, but you know, I, I don't, I don't want to say our hands are tied, but, um, when your actuary comes in and tells you, and by the way, they have a new actuary, only in the fact that they are, they're at, yeah, actuary that we've met with on occasion, I believe his name was Dan Sherman had retired. And, uh, we have a new, we, the county, the retirement board has a new actuary. Replaced Dan, but I do know, because I discussed it with both members, Paul and my wife, and they even sent the new actuaries' findings to their old actuary, and they he agreed, and he's had forty years of experience, so. But we'll deal with it, and, and, and I understand that Tom's reaction, I really do.
And it's a quick question. It's, it's just a quick question. It was on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so we'll put it on the agenda.
What, what, to kind of understand what Paul was telling me, what's your information, we'll re-read, and what's going on here. So there's three different options, and I know we'll talk about that in, in depth.
And?
But is that, like, if, is it the vote that we take as commissioners for Norfolk County? Or is that the retirement board controls? I saw county of Norfolk, like, is listed among this Canton and all these.
They're all going to get the same.
So, right, so there's, uh, three options, I know, but I'm just trying to say is do we vote that, or is the retirement board vote?
The retirement board votes.
Okay, so we really don't have.
And I believe the only difference in the option is standing it up.
I saw that.
The last paragraph is.
One is thirty, one is thirty-two, one is thirty-five. I got that, and that makes sense, so the, the longer you push it off, the less impact, it has less impact, I see it.
And again, you, you, you're glaring in the face of Parrex looking down and saying, you know,
I guess that's.
We'd like to do a show.
So say, say we go, let's take, I'm just making this up, say we vote for twenty thirty-five, but another town says, uh, no, we want to do it for twenty thirty-two, what, what happens then?
I believe they can express themselves to the board, but the board takes the final.
The board has the final.
That's correct.
And Paul is our delegate to that board, right?
Okay, it's two elected by the members.
Okay.
The county treasurer's chairman, ex-official, and one appointed by all of the towns get together and appoint one of their financial people, I believe the town treasurer of Walpole is the present member. It was re- till recently, someone from where, uh, no, Rhythm. Karen, was, oh, you know, Karen Jello, yeah, and now it's someone new from Wal- Walpole.
So those respective towns, Mr. Chairman, would be talking to their people as well, they delegate whatever it is.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, give it any point. Okay.
The, uh, the financial impact will be measured, you'll take a vote within the FY twenty-six budget cycle.
Twenty-six budget.
Mm-hmm, great. So whatever they vote on, that's where you take over, and we'll get into it.
Either way, something happened, so.
That's right, so we'll, um, I'll report back if there's space to bring Paul in, I will certainly do that, Mr. Chairman, and bring forth whatever, uh, number he voted upon, when it is, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Number fifteen, emergency items or topics that Chair did not reasonably anticipate. Um, I have none, I did, except I did talk to John McGowan, our maintenance supervisor, and he mentioned that, that the signs have been repainted.
They look great.
I didn't notice in the book required this morning, I'm listening now, and that all the other new signs are in every district court, everything is uniform.
Looks fantastic, does.
Yeah.
When I pulled up, I saw the one, historic court. Did he, he mean, he did take care of the Mr. Bellotti's signature, is on it now, or was it? It was the, the black sign and the regular sign. You know, it's like, well, he said he repainted them.
Yes, he repainted all those, and he completed this the work that he began last year, the work that he began last year, uniforming every
That you want.
district court has.
Right.
Not Quincy, we did do it for Quincy.
It looks great.
Yeah, and I think Brooklyn was the last one they put up, I had, I had the occasion to go down and and see the rental, and of course, we see them, but, but they're all done too.
Right.
And, uh, they look great, and, you know, it just cleans it up a little, and.
Terrific.
Uh, we want to put our best foot forward, so we thank John.
Yeah.
And, uh,
It does look good.
If we have to adjust for the sign at the Superior Court, because there's going to be a new clerk in the Superior Court, of course, we'll do it immediately, however, there won't be much of an adjustment, their name is very similar, if not exactly. I want to, I'll check, John's going to check that, right?
Yeah.
I'd like an excuse.
Look, Chairman, if I mention also that, uh, what's open session does, County Stowe, again, is anxious to come in and talk to us about the visiting nurse. You know, like, I keep.
Let's, let's put them on.
We could put them on maybe when it's appropriate, I had mentioned not next week, you know, I thought our agenda might be crowded, but perhaps the following week? Would that work, we got permission, and then we can convey to them.[1768.01]